We are live.
All right, let's call this meeting to order, the last meeting of the calendar year, December 18th. Do we have any special intentions today? Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's a special intention for the good health of Ms. Soniak, Gus Soniak, who's my old coach and mentor with 40 years and still presently with the Kenner Recreation Department. His wife Evelyn Soniak has been ill, but is doing better. So, you know, on behalf of everyone, I'd like to ask for your prayers. Continue with good health for Ms. Evelyn and for Mr. Gus, Coach Gus' family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. As we said, this is the, almost the end of the year 2020. And so my special intention would be to all of those who have suffered from the COVID-19 virus this year through death or sickness, that we remember them going into 21, where we hope with the new vaccine, we'll put a curve and control this virus and slow down the death and injuries, sicknesses on other residents of our country and the world. So just want to make sure we all keep, everybody that's suffered from this in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing nobody else. Deacon Ed Rapier, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Certainly. Let us pray. Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Gracious God, we give you thanks for giving us another day. In times of darkness, we readily turn on lights. Millions of Americans in this season have variously turned on to the celebrations of Hanukkah, the festival of lights, and the Advent and Christmas season with its trees and lights. Where there is darkness here, send forth a spark of inspiration and grace to enlighten minds and warm hearts to respond to your love for your people. Help us this day to draw closer to you so that with your spirit and aware of your presence among us, we may all face the tasks of this day. Bless our elected officials, our mayor, our police chief, and the members of our city council. Help them to think clearly, speak confidently, and act courageously in the belief that all noble service is based upon patience, truth, and love. Eternal father of all of us, fill your children with the delight that comes from light. May we walk no longer in the darkness of distrust, but join together in mutual understanding and peace toward the common well-being of our city. May all that we do this day be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Wilmot, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Place your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice and liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Councilman McKenna is absent. Is there any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of December 3rd, 2020. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item four is correspondence, reports from the mayor, CIO, or department heads. Item four A, at the request of the administration, a report from the Arizona's.
Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chairman. First, I'd like to do a proclamation for the LPC. And I'm going to explain in just a minute what that is. Whereas, and Adam, I think we have someone else who wants to speak on this, don't they?
Yes, we do. Mr. Paul Christian, he's on.
Okay. Whereas LPC is a charity and music trade school that operates Kenner's music program. And whereas LPC opened its doors in Kenner in early 2020 to provide classes in piano, voice, guitar, bass, harmonica, composition, and music history. Whereas since March of 2020, in spite of the continued restrictions due to COVID-19, the LPC faculty began free online music classes and to date have provided more than 200 hours of free music lessons via Zoom to the community. Whereas the LPC faculty and staff, volunteers, and board have worked tirelessly to make this program a success. Now, therefore, I, Ben Zahn, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Kenner, with our city council and chief of police, do hereby declare Friday, December 18th, 2020, as LPC Day in the city of Kenner and bestow great thanks to LPC and its members for their selflessness, contribution, and the gift of music to the citizens of Kenner. At this point, in the pre-COVID world that we live in, we would gather with the LPC representative staff for photographs. But we know that with our council, we know that we can't do that right now because we're on Zoom. So in our Zoom version of this proclamation, I'm going to ask Mr. Paul Christensen, Christian, I'm sorry, Director of LPC, introduce the staff he has with him. And I just want to say, I appreciate what y'all have done with this. Adam is something Adam brought me a while back. And I thought it was something good for the city of Kenner, particularly during this time because it's something we can actually do through Zoom. So Paul and your staff, we appreciate it. And Adam, also thank you for your work on this.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I really appreciate it. I would like to acknowledge first our faculty. And I think a majority of them are here today. Jane Harvey Brown, who has taught our vocal class. Eduardo Laba, who has taught guitar, beginning piano, and our Spanish programming. Matthew Keegan, who's done two classes in world rhythms and claves and percussion and drums. Benjamin Stein, who's here from the University of York in Toronto. He joined us late in the spring. It's been fabulous to have him. As well as Julio Brusette, who has recently moved from Milan, Italy. He is in Boston, Massachusetts, and has been doing a harmonica lab for us. Our volunteers, I'd like to acknowledge just real quick, Madison Adams and Casey Mullen and Elliot Lestrade. Our professional staff, Victoria Borja, Gary Reggio, who designed our logo, and Brittany Alessandro, who designed our website. Of course, our board of directors, Carrie Lewis, Major Carrie Lewis, Amy Reggio, Stephanie Davis, Tracy Rodriguez. And I would like to acknowledge representing Louisiana Lighthouse with this, we have Stephanie Benedetti, great Italian name. And I'd like her to be able to speak a little bit. We've had a wonderful relationship with the Lighthouse. We've done three classes a week for low vision and the blind in our community. It is a partnership that we're going to expand into the next year. But I'll let her say a few words. But thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. It's been an honor to serve this community.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Stephanie Benedetti with Lighthouse Louisiana. And I just want to thank you for the LPC as well as just to the entire Kenner community, which I know has supported the LPC, for bringing music lessons to our clients and employees at the Lighthouse who are blind and low vision. It has really been a meaningful experience. And even though we've had to work through virtual adaptations and work through those things, it has been just great to see where our staff are going and our clients are going and their energy and excitement around the program. We did make a really short video, which I encourage everyone to go check out. It's on our Facebook page, which is just facebook.com/lighthouselouisiana. We made just a three-minute video featuring Paul and some of the students. And you can hear their stories and their energy and their passion about the program. So again, thank you for connecting us with this program. We really appreciate the partnership and really the ability to bring music through touch and sound to our clients and employees. So thanks again.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll just close and say, again, it's just an honor to serve this community. I've been teaching here professionally for 15 years. And the guys at CNM, Chris and Melvin, have been incredibly helpful at CNM Music Center to help us get this program off. And we look forward to growing it into the future into a really full-functioning music trade school.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it. Adam, any comments?
I just want to say, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for letting me work on this project. It's been really interesting. Paul, thanks for bringing this. Thank you and your staff for volunteering and all of the hours that y'all have given through the pandemic. I know at least one of my kids has enjoyed a couple of the classes, so thanks again.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilman, I do have some reports too that I want to present to the council. We just did a code sweep this past week in your district with your help of your office. 1,600 block to 2,000 blocks of 42nd Street, actually right in my neighborhood. Little debris, eight. Fence repairs, one. Patient soffit, one. There was an abandoned refrigerator, one. And warning violations, 11. So we do see a difference starting in that area because there has been some things that we've had problems with in Newport and 42nd Street area. Working with the Beachview Civic Association too with that. So appreciate their help and also your help, Councilman Hayes. Good news is, the Kenner Business Association raised $10,180 for the Kenner Food Bank. That's extremely important right now because as one of my deputy CEOs, Lee Russell, reminded me, we weren't able to have the Sipping with Santa function at Chateau, which usually raises some money because of COVID restrictions. So at least we were able to get $10,180 from the Kenner Business Association from how they did their event this year. So I want to thank Ann Branigan, also members of my staff, Mary Sharon Holland, and everyone who was Carolyn Barrett, who's involved in that with Kenner Business. I think Carolyn Barrett, who does it in Kenner, is going to be the new president. So I look forward to working with her, as I have with Ann. Some bad news that we have, which I'll report this, sometimes it's up and down, but most times it's down more than when it's up. Tax numbers. Citywide sales tax revenue for December is down 10.5%. In numbers, in amount of money, that's $335,000 down this December from last December, 2019. For our current fiscal year, we are down right at 14%, 13.9% down. Compared to this time last year, for the whole year, that equals $2,700,000. I'm going to say it one more time. We have some problems because of COVID. It continues to be a problem. So anytime we have an opportunity to get some money in, we got to make sure we put it in the right areas to make sure our city stays whole. Added to that, the sales tax from the airport, because the airport being down has had a $6-point billion decrease for what Kenner gets from that. That is not good. Kenner lost $6.1 million since this time last year because of the airport, because people are not traveling. So when you look at those things, like I tell y'all during the budget, and I usually tell y'all every time, that we're going to have some major challenges because we still don't see COVID going away. We still see, obviously, we see a spike. The governor just yesterday talking about it. Of course, the vaccine's here, but you know, we don't know when that's all going to be, able to be distributed and get that to each and every person to make sure we don't have those problems here or throughout this country. So we have some major challenges. But with that, I want to, I want to take a minute because I don't, we don't have an agenda meeting in person. We have to do everything by Zoom. We don't have a council meeting in person. I want to thank my staff, all my executive staff, all the staff, all the men and women, the civil servants that work the streets and the offices that have continued to work for the city of Kenner. In, even though sometimes you have to be remote, sometimes you are there on the scene or at the office in the city of Kenner. But for everyone, even though you've worked, those that have worked remote, you've probably worked harder remote because it's nonstop. You don't get to walk away from it. At City Hall, you get to walk in at 8:30, you leave at 4:30. I know being remote, you have it in your house all day long. So those people, including the field people, including the people that go into the office, thank you for continuing to keep the city running. It's extremely important at the end of the year to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays because we've made it. We've made it through this year. We have six more months this year before we have another budget. It's going to be tight, but hopefully 2021, this year, next year, 2021, we're talking about how things have gotten better. So again, I want to thank everyone who works for the city of Kenner for what you do. That's it, Councilman.
Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. Before all the LPC members do get pulled away, I see Paul, looks like he may have left. I just want to add on to Adam and Ben's comments of thank. They've enlightened me on some of the things that they do for the blind. And the music portion was quite inspiring to hear what they do. So I'm very happy for that and thankful for what they do. And I also just want to then recognize the fact that a Kenner business in District 2 is part of that process, CNM Music. I've been in there several times myself to get some things that I needed. And they're a great staff over there, and I thank them for what they do to help out this program. So keep up the good work, guys.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilman Carroll, to approve the consent agenda. Councilman, let's vote.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings and final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,767. An ordinance approving assignment of the lease agreement by East Jefferson General Hospital to LCMC Health Holdings Incorporated of the leased property located at 18th Street. And approving the amendment of the lease agreement by the city of Kenner and LCMC Health Holdings Incorporated.
We have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan, to open the public hearing. Councilman, let's vote.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open your hearing.
Mr. Campbell, do we have anybody that wants to address us on this matter?
I see no hands raised, Councilman.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan, to close the public hearing. Council members, let's vote.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Motion passes 6-0.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, Brennan, I'm sorry, to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Motion passes 6-0 to approve. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,768. An ordinance approving the sale of a 30,000-square-foot unimproved portion of the Georgia Avenue right-of-way between squares 56 and 57, Highway Park subdivision, Kenner, Louisiana, which said property is owned by the city of Kenner.
Madam Clerk, has this been deferred?
I believe it's a one-meeting deferral has been requested.
Do we do the public hearing anyway, or do we just move to defer?
You can move to defer.
I ask who has the deferral.
Who was that? Councilman Brennan?
The deferral, please.
The purchasers of the right of the street, the people who are going to purchase it have asked for a deferral.
Do I hear a motion to defer?
Motion.
We have a first and a second. Let's vote.
Could you please clarify your motion, sir, for deferral?
Councilman Carroll.
Motion, first motion to defer.
Second, Councilman Segura.
Motion, seconded for one-meeting deferral. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura on a one-meeting deferral. Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
And Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Motion passes 6-0 for one-meeting deferral. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,773. An ordinance to establish the standards for small wireless facilities to be placed in city right-of-way in the city of Kenner, Louisiana, and to provide for related matters. Mr. Chairman, I've also received a request for a one-meeting deferral.
I move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Just to explain this, you know, all council members did receive correspondence from Verizon asking for consideration of a deferral. I received a telephone call from AT&amp;T yesterday asking that we consider deferral. Spoke with city attorney, and he can collaborate, but he said no problem. So they're still working out language that they just needed more time to work on before we should consider voting on this. So that's where the motion for the one-meeting deferral is coming from.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember.
Wilmot.
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilmember Branigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Motion passes 6-0 for one-meeting deferral. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,769. An ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the city of Kenner, Louisiana on March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending a rezoning lot 23A, square 508, Highway Park subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, from RR1, single-family residential, to SI, special industrial, and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning director for the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner, Louisiana.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Hayes, to open the public hearing. Council members, let's vote.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open your hearing.
Mr. Dufour, from our planning area, do you have a couple of words on this?
I do, Council President. Thank you. The, let me get that up. Make sure everybody can see that. Everyone can see that?
I think we can.
Okay, good. The owner and the applicant in this particular case is Puleo Properties LLC, 5401 Janus Avenue, Kenner, Louisiana, 70065. Lot 23A is an undeveloped lot fronting Colorado Avenue, bounded by unimproved 19th Street on the south, 20th Street on the north, and California Avenue on the west. As part of the rezoning application process, the applicant conducted an early neighborhood notice meeting on September 8th, 2020. They invited the 10 surrounding property owners within the specified area. Four people attended, including District 2 Councilman Mike Segura. None of the residents attending had any issues with the rezoning request by the applicant. This particular property is situated between airport property on the west and east. This particular lot is not, has not been rezoned, or was not, excuse me, not purchased by the airport. However, lot 23, much of the land surrounding this lot was purchased by the airport and thus prohibited from developing residentially. There's been significant rezoning around it to special industrial. Several large parcels around it have been rezoned. Because of the subject site's position within large amounts of airport land, it's extremely unlikely that this lot will ever develop residentially. Thus, the requested rezoning is consistent with the future land use recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell, is anybody wishing to speak on this?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Hayes, to close the public hearing. Let's vote.
Trying to stop my screen share.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Hayes to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Segura.
Yeah, I just needed to add real quick that as Mr. Dufour has presented, the land surrounding, completely encircling this lot, has all been rezoned to light industrial. The light, the property across the street, Colorado on the east side, has already been rezoned. So it's completely out of the realm that anybody would want to develop it as a, as a, as a planning board agree. So this is what's happening with this subdivision, with the airport buyout land that we are periodically having to rezone properties to make it conforming with the properties around it. So I encourage everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's vote. Councilman Wilmot.
I just had one quick question, and maybe Councilman Segura can answer this question. As far as residential, what is the roughly, how far is the residential, any residential property near this property? Is it like a half a block away? There's nothing adjoining it, obviously, but is there, how far away is it? Could you answer that?
Yeah, the closest residential block is pretty, almost 400 feet away going to the east. But the block in between that has all been rezoned special industrial already by us. So and then the other property to the north has also been rezoned.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That helps. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 12 is other ordinance for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. We have none. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15, A, is 12,774. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from EBE Fence Company Incorporated to furnish and install fencing on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 20-6571 in an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
We have a motion by Council Wilmot, seconded by Councilman Brennan, to approve. Council members, let's vote.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,775. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide tree work on an as-needed basis in accordance with bid number 20-6560 in an amount not to exceed. in an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Motion by Councilman Branigan, seconded by Councilman Wilmot to approve.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Motion passes six zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-six, an ordinance approving an agreement with Pace Analytical Services LLC to provide laboratory analysis services on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFP nineteen dash sixty-five twenty-seven in an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand dollars per year for a period of three years for the Department of Wastewater.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Motion passes six zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven, an ordinance approving an agreement for phone system upgrades with Mitel in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars annually.
Motion by Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Branigan to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Motion passes six zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Bearcom to supply Motorola TLK one hundred wave two-way in accordance with bid number twenty dash nineteen sixty-eight in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars annually.
Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKenny. I'm sorry, Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Item fifteen F is a resolution amended, approving amendment number two to the engineering agreement with Principal Engineering Incorporated dated March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, regarding the pavement management system to increase the agreement amount by five thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an order setting the franchise fee to be paid by those entities providing cable or video service within the city's limits under a state-granted franchise authority and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Item sixteen B is an ordinance authorizing the purchase and assembly of eleven automated license plate recognition cameras and components in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars, utilizing state of Louisiana contract number four four zero 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 one one two four one with Louisiana Tech LLZ LLC for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid from State Block Incorporated to supply masonry supplies in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five seventy-two in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Traffic Solutions Louisiana LLC to provide guardrail maintenance in accordance with sealed bid twenty dash sixty-five seventy-four in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Three Seas Property Incorporated to supply limestone in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five seventy-three in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving amendment number two to the fiscal year two thousand twenty annual action plan for the proposed community development block grant for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving amendment number two to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual action plan for the proposed community development block grant CARES Act CDVG dash CV funds in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars for the Community Development Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Segura.
Yes, first off, I'd like to just comment that as we're leaving this very strange year, two thousand twenty, where we started off at the beginning of the year and, and, you know, most jovial way that we would. We were on a great rise, you know, everything was moving along and all of a sudden we get hit with this COVID virus that just stunned us and basically took the breath out of it and knocked us down, locked everybody up for months. And then we started coming out of that a little bit and then the hurricane season peaked and we threatened several times and hit one time a hurricane. And here we are finally thinking hurricane season's over, but we never know, I guess, in today's world. But we do see that COVID is still around us. And the good part, though, is because of the surge in approvals by the FDA of the vaccines, both made here in the United States and other parts of the world, that we are hopeful to see a downturn in twenty-one of COVID spread with the vaccination. So with that, I strongly want to encourage everyone to get the vaccination so that it's available to all of us. And perhaps the latter part, middle part to the end of twenty twenty-one will allow us to get out of this problem that is caused. So with that, I'd want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll deal with what we have to deal with as we come into the next year. And we hope it'll be better than twenty twenty.
Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council Chair. I would just like to extend a thanks to Mr. Elton Ryder, who is a District Five resident, just retired from the Jefferson Parish Police Department with over forty years' service. And I just wanted to thank him and all our police officers, fire department, EMS, for all of their hard work, dedication, and responses keeping our city, parish, and state safe. Thank you. And Merry Christmas, all.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Council President. May twenty twenty-one be a lot brighter and may God bless and protect each and every one of us. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Branigan.
Councilman Hayes, I just want to congratulate you on doing a great job as the council president the last six months and handled the meetings really well. And it's funny that the last two meetings are the shortest two of the year, so that's interesting. And just wish a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. Two thousand twenty-one's got to be better than two thousand twenty. That's for sure.
Thank you. And for the new council chairman, coming up, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to echo Councilman Branigan, to be able to follow you, your footsteps, some of the things and your maneuvers and care of the meeting, I hopeful, hopefully I'll be able to sustain that and do as well as you. Two other things, I'd like to thank Ms. Foshee and the attorney and his, and his staff for support with a couple of families in District One that dealt with some challenges over the years, but with their cooperation, with their legal expertise, was able to support the families and support the city of Kenner with their knowledge and expertise. And I believe that this will be two more families that will be added to our role or tax purposes, but also as two families being part of the city of Kenner that we always look forward to. Secondly, to some individuals that, who are being supportive. After this meeting, we're going to be going to Washington Elementary. And just a little short story, school reached out to me about some of the students because of their parents being affected by COVID, were having challenges with the Christmas. So that being said, you know, a number of people reached out for class three day, I believe. I'd like to acknowledge them personally. Myers Engineering, Mr. Sid Buller Realtors, MSMM Engineering, Manish Narada, Councilman Wilmot, Attorney Timothy Shaw, Community Development, my assistant Kelly Harper, District, District One, and Fire Chief Terrance Morris. So we've been having challenges. I like to say that the city of Kenner through all of this, you know, the most thing that I'm proud of is that from a safety standpoint, we never, we never faltered, we never backed away. We took criticism, but that's part of the job. But we never, never got off of the fact that safety is always our concern for our constituents and our work staff. So I am most proud of that, that obviously we have had some challenges, but we came out of this. I'd like to thank all of the depart, the departments within the city of Kenner that supported us. Every department, every employee that supported us through all the hurricanes, the COVID, support of any. And I pray that their families have a blessed and prosperous New Year. Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, and God bless everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Madam Court.
Item seven, item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Campbell, do we have anybody?
Mr. Almorello is up first.
Almorello, Florida two sixty East Lyle Drive, fifth district, forty-eight years. I wanted to speak on fifteen A, but the council chairman did not open the floor for public hearing. So I fully expect to have a few extra minutes because I want to speak on it now. Now, fifteen A, I want to know where the funding is coming from, how this, where this hundred thousand is coming from for that fencing? And is this work that could be done in-house? That's the two questions I have. I'm not yielding my time. You can answer me when I'm done talking. Now, trial of virus numbers as of yesterday, four million forty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three tests. Positive cases, two hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine. Negative cases, three million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand five oh four. Recoveries, two hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Now, the reason I wanted to speak on fifteen A at the parish council meeting on December the ninth, I debated this issue with our, with money for our recreation department with Councilman Lee and Councilman Infostaro. And I made it perfectly clear our recreation department is underfunded. We need that, we need either all or some of that four hundred thousand dollars a year that the residents account pay for Laughery Air Park. In particular, our Veterans Park, which is in your district, Councilman Segura, the artifacts in our park, the conditioning in is disgraceful. But especially the two planes at the entrance of the park. The pain, the pain is all faded, the emblems are all faded. They need to be maintained. And if you all care about Veterans that you say you do, you'll make that park maintenance of Veterans Park in Kenner number one priority. Next item on the list, the Siler family, I want to extend my condolences and keep them in our prayers, the young man who was senselessly murdered trying to make a living for his family in the city of Kenner, okay? I also encourage the district attorney, Paul Conick, to seek the death penalty in this case. Public announcement, property taxes for Jefferson Parish were mailed late. The new deadline now to mail your parish property taxes is January the fourth. And in closing, I want to wish the people of Kenner, all our employees, including administration and the council, a very blessed and Merry Christmas and happy and prosperous New Year. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Campbell, anybody else?
Mr. Greg.
Mr. President, Mr. President, can I, can I answer Mr. Morello on fifteen A?
Yes, sir. And I think Councilman Segura also wants to speak after you.
So just really quick, fifteen A is a contract that we have every year for fencing. Recreation Department obviously has so many facilities throughout the city that we have to maintain fencing on. It is not cheaper to do it in-house. That's one thing that I have looked at since I've been here for two years. The funding for this comes from capital, capital proj, excuse me, capital funding that we have. And it's not just for the Recreation Department. It's shared by the General Services Department, Public Works, and our Parkway's Department. We all share it for the different facilities that we manage.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Segura, you jumping up and down?
Well, I just tried to get your attention because you were kind of moving forward to have the shortest meeting for the year. The, Mr. Morel, your comments on Veterans Park are taken very seriously, but let me just put you in perspective. The, the decals on the planes are not what you called fading away. We have removed them purposely as part of the project to get the jets repainted. So it's taken, we had that done a couple of months ago, but we're in a period of weather concerns that we're not able to get them painted right now. So that is the purpose that the planes look a little out of character without their decals on is so we can get the opportunity to get them repainted and then we will replace the decals on them. The other artifacts are all properly cleaned through the Parks and Recreation and General Services Departments. I am happy to point out that we do have a new artifact to put on display. We have a World War II Willis Jeep that was, we were able to purchase very inexpensively and we're working on getting it refurbished. It just takes a little bit of rust repair and a paint job. And we will get that up in Veterans Park. Also, it has a cargo trailer to tow behind it that will also get refurbished and be part of the display. So I just want you to appreciate your concerns with Veterans Park, but believe me, I do take them very seriously and do want to keep every artifact we have in good order as well as seek new ones. So for anybody, like I said, with the jets, yeah, we purposely took the decals off so we can repaint and we will have that done shortly. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Segura reminded me about something I forgot to mention, and that is for the Christmas Village in Rivertown, I like to, you know, thank the guys, the director, assistant director, all the maintenance personnel who has done a fantastic job year after year. The park looked fantastic. The weather, the weather has been kind of inclement, so if you do have a chance between now and the end of the year, please go out to the park, walk around. Obviously, social distancing is in effect, but I believe it's an opportunity for the children to get out, to see some of the new displays with the support from the General Services, Ms. Foshee, the administration. And just go out there, walk around a little bit and enjoy it, man. It looks fantastic. It looks great at night, passing by, seeing the lights. So we look forward to improving the park each year as we go on. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Campbell, anybody else?
Mr. Greg Teff, you can unmute your microphone.
Yes, Greg Teff, on West Lyle Drive in Kenner. I've got just a couple of things I want to bring up. One of them is going to deal with the police chief, I mean, the fire chief. I've just been wondering how the response time has been since the new fire station has been in place. Has it been better for those residents in South Kenner? Or has it been, or those that thought they were being affected, or is it about the same? And if we don't have, and if we don't have the information now, it could be maybe brought up at the next. And if we don't have, and if you don't have the information now, it could be, uh, maybe brought up at the next council meeting so that, uh, we could, uh, have an update on how that fire station is doing. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, and I'm not, I'm, I don't want this to be taken wrongly, but there's been a lot of people complaining about the speeding on denture. Seems like it's becoming a, uh, a race track or a grad strip of some sort. And I'm just wondering if, uh, I, and I, and I can't say if they've been in contact with the council, a member or not. It's, again, I'm just one by what people have been saying on the street. But, uh, I just want to make, bring it to everyone's attention, but maybe we may want to start looking into maybe, uh, uh, looking at some of those things to see if, uh, if that is truly happening. And if it is, maybe, uh, get the times brain and that maybe we can be more effective with all, our control. And then the last thing I want to bring up has to do with the Discovery School. Uh, there's been talk that there's been speed on Loyola going blasting through the stop sign at Loyola and Vantage, going back to the Vantage issue. Um, and I was wondering if it would ever be possible if we could contract the school board to have flashing yellow signs when, when the school is when people are going to school and when people are leaving the school. Um, and I just want to wish the, the administration, the council, city employees, and residents of Kenner a very Merry Christmas and a very happy, prosperous New Year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell, anybody else?
I see no other hands raised, Councilman.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Council President?
Chief Morris, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to, uh, Mr. Teft, he asked about, uh, South Side Fire Station, the response times on, on which station? Uh, is he talking about the temporary station on, uh, Duke?
Mr. Teft?
It is the temporary station that was put out. Uh, I just wanted to know if the response time has been better or if it's the same or has it gotten any worse?
Uh, I don't have those specific, specific numbers right, right now, but what, what I can say is this, that, uh, we have a monthly staff meeting where we look at the numbers, uh, throughout the city, department-wide, and we are right at ninety percent of under our standard response times for, uh, our insurance rating under the five minutes and twenty seconds. So we running right at ninety percent, uh, overall, but I get those specific numbers for you.
Yes, ma'am.
If, uh, we could answer the question also that, um, oh, okay. I'm looking to see if Candace is on live. She's on YouTube, so I'm going to have to repeat this. Um, the question that Mr. Teft raised about the signs and signals at that location, we've actually recently submitted a grant to be able to put those, uh, near Discover School. So I think some of the issues, uh, regarding signage and flashing signs and all of that are being addressed now with the grant that we.
Thank you, Ms. Fauchet. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Move by, uh, motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilman Carroll. Thank y'all very much. Merry Christmas to, Happy New Year to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Hope that is good to all the kids.